It is seven o'clock. On January 12, 2022, and I'll call the zoning board of appeals. Meeting to order. This is a continued public hearing on a 40B comprehensive permit application of Jeffrey Engler of SLV School Street LOC to be known as the Sanctuary at Manchester by the Sea for a comprehensive permit under Mass General Laws, Chapter 40B, Sections 20 to 23, to construct the 136 unit apartment complex for which the Mass Housing Finance Agency issued a project eligibility decision on September 16, 2021, at School Street, assessors map number 43, lot number 18, filed with the town clerk on September 27. I am the chair and with me I have board members. Sean Son, Jim Dietrich, Catherine Howe, John Benares, and Brian Solace. I don't know if James Mitchell has.
I'm here.
Okay, and James Mitchell. Thanks. We have a rather full agenda tonight. I plan on ending the meeting no later than 9:30 tonight. So hopefully we'll get through everything we would like to get through. The first item on the agenda is the traffic circulation and parking peer review presentation by Environmental Partners. In December, we received a revised traffic impact analysis from Vanessi and Environmental Partners have looked at that revised report is. Is Greg Lucas on?
I am here. Hello.
Fantastic. Thank you. Would you like to to provide us with an overview of your findings regarding the traffic analysis?
Sure, I'd be glad to. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Just for the record, I know this is the first time I've appeared before the Manchester by the Sea zoning board appeals. And so my name is Greg Lucas. I'm a senior project manager with Environmental Partners. I'm a registered professional engineer in Massachusetts. I'm also nationally certified as a professional traffic operations engineer and as a certified road safety professional. We had an opportunity to review the traffic impact assessment prepared by Vanessin Associates. Also reviewed the site plans for overall for traffic, transportation, parking, and circulation. And I won't go through every detail, but I'd be happy to answer any questions as we go along with the discussion tonight. But in general, we found the the study to be, you know, professionally done as we typically see of Vanessin Associates. It accurately captures the traffic expected to be generated by the 136 unit residential development proposed to Sanctuary at School Street. And it collected existing traffic data. It made some adjustments. They made some adjustments to that data based on the seasonality of data using, you know, traditional traditional means, industry accepted standards, appropriate mass that data to both seasonally adjust that collected data and also to make an adjustment to account for the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic, which is still affecting traffic volumes across the state. And so we expect to see some acknowledgement of that and some adjustment for that. We did make a comment related to that. We had provided our comment review memorandum on Monday. That's provided to VAI. I'm sure they haven't had a chance to thoroughly consider it yet, but one of the comments in there related to traffic data was that a further review of the COVID-related data should be should be conducted. It may reveal that there's different appropriate adjustments in the peak hours. We look at and we study the morning peak hour, typically the commuter peak hour of traffic and the afternoon or evening peak hour of traffic. There may be different factors if we dive deeper into the data suggesting different adjustments are appropriate to account for the COVID-19 pandemic. We looked at their trip generation for the proposed land use again, following industry standards. We took no exception to that, to the trips that they are projecting to be generated by the proposed development. And how those trips are distributed along the roadway network onto School Street, primarily onto the Route 128 ramps, primarily heading southbound, really westbound on Route 128, which is to be expected, given a, you know, commuter-focused distribution. And so looking at operations for the site, there are some existing operational concerns at specifically the Route 128 ramps within their study area that are exacerbated by both the application of a seven-year projection of traffic growth and less so by the addition of the project-generated trips. We liken it to a known problem that is only going to get worse. When we looked at parking and circulation of the site, we found the site proposes 242 parking spaces. Zoning bylaws, and this is shown on the site plans, require 383 parking spaces. And so there is no justification provided as to why fewer parking spaces are appropriate for this particular development. We would expect to see that. As far as circulation, the site topography presents certain challenges to the layout of the site. We understand that. I assume that's why the driveway is laid out as shown, where it basically goes up and wraps around the building. That results in a driveway that's approximately 1,800 feet long, which is, which well exceeds zoning, the zoning bylaw, which requires driveways to be 500 feet or less. Another issue that wasn't brought up in our review, but we are aware of correspondence between the town and the Architectural Access Board, where the town had asked for an opinion on whether a pedestrian access, an accessible route should be provided to School Street and our understanding, excuse me, our understanding is the Architectural Access Board found that yes, that should be provided. We see, you know, we take no exception to their findings. I think that makes sense that there would be access to planned improvements for sidewalks on School Street. The the study does talk about promoting pedestrian use and providing connections, but it doesn't have any specific details as to what or the plans also don't have any specific details as to what actual accommodations are proposed for pedestrians and for bicycles. Another issue related to parking is the idea of the parking stalls proposed. There are, the proposed spaces are nine foot by 18 feet. This does not comply with the zoning bylaw, which requires nine foot by 20 foot spaces. And then we were also asked and provided some opinion on the waivers that had been requested, which includes both the number of parking spaces and the parking stall dimensions, among other factors, among other items. We found in general, there were some that were typical that had previously been waived by the planning board, typical of a 40B development. Took no exception to those. There are others that seem to be are being requested in order to accommodate the size of the building, the size and the density of the building. So there is a need for, for example, there's a need for smaller parking spaces in order to accommodate the number of parking spaces that are proposed. There's a need for to request a waiver for four parking spaces because the number required by the bylaw can't be provided. And so that's a general overview. I'm happy to answer any, as I mentioned, I'm happy to answer any questions as we go along. Thank you.
Sarah Malish, I have a question for you. I'm not particularly familiar with traffic studies. And I know they look at proposed building along the corridor. Other things might be coming along. I recently heard that there is a proposal before the planning board to add a corporate campus across the street off Atwater Avenue for up to 500 employees. Would that impact this traffic study? Is that something that should be taken into consideration or not?
Certainly would. It certainly would impact one thing, and I'm not familiar with that particular that particular project or its proposal. It would have to be something that has, not just in the planning stages, but something, you mentioned it has an application before the planning board. And so.
Yeah, I'm not sure whether it's a proposal.
Yeah. So, so, and that's kind of the dividing line is, is we would need to be, have it be something formally proposed to the town, looking for site plan approval from the planning board. So that its impact, there should be a traffic study conducted as part of that application. Its impact would be defined by its applicant proponent and thereby their traffic engineer. And then those numbers could be incorporated when considering the future condition that this project assumes. It would assume that that exists, that that other project exists at the same time. But again, it needs to be formalized to a point where it actually exists as an application before the planning.
Okay, thank you.
Sarah.
Yes, Jim.
Jim Dietrich. Sue Brown is on this Zoom. Maybe she could give, let give us a little more detail on this, on this item you just mentioned.
Sue Brown. Yeah, thanks, Sarah. So this is a, there is not an application yet. The planning board on Monday did have an informal discussion with the proponent. Currently, there is no path forward with our existing zoning. So zoning would need to change in order for this proposal to be considered.
Thank you.
If I could also add an opinion. You know, quite frankly, given the size of what you had described, although it sounds like there isn't a likely path forward, it would be more critical for that study to consider this development than the opposite, for this development to consider that study. More important for the larger generator of traffic to, through their process, accurately identify the traffic expected, including this other development.
And does it matter whether it's built in phases or not?
That would only depend because we typically look, you know, these studies, master requirements, expect them to look at a seven-year design horizon. If it's phased so that it exceeds that seven-year design horizon, then we would only expect to see whatever is expected at that seven-year design horizon.
Okay.
Now for their study, we would expect them to fully evaluate the, you know, the full the entirety of what they're proposing.
You also made some mention in your review about an emergency, second emergency egress.
Yeah, given the length of the driveway, it would be beneficial to have a second access for emergency vehicles. We would look for the fire department, the fire chief's opinion on that, but our recommendation would be for the safety of the, of the residents, that there is some secondary access.
Would it be, Sarah, may I speak?
Yes, Jim.
Jim Dietrich. I'm sorry, gentlemen, I totally forgot your name, but would this secondary access, could it be an emergency type of access that is not used by the residents, but just there for emergency vehicles? And would that affect how this access would be structured?
It's, it's common, you know, there's a lot of times we see that secondary access might be restricted gated and only used by emergency vehicles. As far as how it's structured, there's still some, you know, standard design elements. We don't want it to be too steep. We don't want it to be too narrow. So there are still some standard design elements that should be applied.
So there are standards that would apply to this?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Sarah.
Yes, Brian.
I've got a question. Mr. Lucas, you mentioned the smaller stalls for the parking. Okay, as it doesn't meet current bylaws. Is that those, so if they were to go with the required size, then the stall count would even drop further than the 240 plus or minus? Is that what you're saying?
I would, I would assume so. I mean, obviously they'd need to find two more, two more feet for each row of parking. So, you know, I didn't, I didn't look in detail and try to lay out a row of nine by 20 spaces.
So what we're saying then is that not only we get, we're getting smaller spots and less spots than required under current bylaws.
As compared to the zoning bylaws, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do you know what normal space sizes are? Are our bylaws normal or abnormal?
I think a nine by 18 space is not abnormal. What they're proposing is not abnormal, especially in a structured garage. The challenge then becomes, and we didn't look at it in this level of detail, become some of the circulation in the garage and aisle widths, et cetera. As you get the narrower spaces, there's more likelihood of a larger vehicle sticking out. And so, you know, we need to take more careful consideration at the turns, the ramps, et cetera, in a structured parking.
Sarah, I have a question for Greg. It's. Given the information that a nine by 18 proposed space is not abnormal, Greg, is it, would it be true to be more concerned about the quantity at 242 proposed parking spaces versus 383? 242 is only 63% of what the zoning requires for spaces. Isn't that the bigger issue than the actual size of the space? If the size of the space, the smaller space is really not abnormal, shouldn't we be concerned with the fact they're only providing roughly 60% of the parking that's required?
I think in both cases, there should be justification as to why is, you know, supporting the waiver request, there should be justification as to why not meeting those standards is proposed. You know, go ahead.
Okay, well, go ahead and finish because I have one separate question.
I, yeah, I was, I was gonna say, you know, there is, there is other data that would suggest, there is available data that would suggest, you know, typical parking ratios for residential buildings, suburban areas, not close, not within walking distance of transit, something like this that can suggest, you know, based on industry data. There's also, you know, probably local data that's available to suggest what a typical parking ratio should be. And so at a bare minimum, when they're not providing what's required by the zoning bylaw, I would expect to see something like that to justify why, you know, what, why do we think that 242 spaces is adequate? Some justification of that.
Okay. And my follow-up question is concerning the egress, the secondary access for emergency vehicles. And I just wanted to, maybe you could clarify. My understanding with emergency access roads is they have to accommodate some very large fire equipment. Wouldn't that road be a significant size and pitch in order to be effectively considered an emergency access that was viable?
Yeah, as I said, there, there are, you know, there are standards. I don't have those in front of me, so I can't quote exactly what that standard is. But yes, I mean, we're not talking about a 10-foot roadway at an 8% grade, like that wouldn't be acceptable. It needs to be of a certain width, of a certain slope, of a certain grade, so.
And given your understanding of the existing site or the proposed site, is it even feasible under the current design for that roadway to be incorporated into a revised design?
I would say it would be challenging. I, I didn't look, you know, I didn't look in detail at the topography to determine what might be feasible, but it seems that it would be challenging, yes.
Okay, thank you.
John Benares, did you have any questions?
Not at this point. I think Mr. Lucas hit all the all the highlights in the hot button issues that I had on my shortlist here in his report and in his presentation just now. You know, I'm concerned about the emergency vehicle access, the pedestrian access. The number of parking spaces concerns me more than the, the size of the parking spaces. And especially given that this is a, not a centrally located site. And, you know, nowadays households tend to have more than just one vehicle. So again, Mr. Lucas touched on all my concerns and I have nothing more to add at this point.
Thank you. Catherine?
Um, I don't think I have any questions right now. Most of my questions have already been touched on by others. You know, I would note that, yeah, so I know, no questions right now. I'm gonna wait.
Sean.
No, I don't have any questions right now. Just thank you, Mr. Lucas, for all your input.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Sarah?
Yes.
I have another question. The extent of your, the study, did it, I know, I'm now asking to speculate. The, this is, do you have any idea, I'm looking at the commuter rail. Okay, I don't know how far your study went down as far as traffic going down School Street into the downtown area. I'm concerned that a number of these, when we find, when these cars do get into this are parking in this facility here, they're gonna, there were, how many commuters do you, do you have a sense of what are gonna be utilizing the commuter rail? I think that's probably one of the selling points close to beaches and commuter rail. And the impact it's gonna have on what is already congested parking area, parking field down at the commuter rail station. Is that looked at? Is that something your study would have considered?
It's, it's, it's not something that we looked at and I, it wasn't something, although the study area does extend down School Street to the Route 127 intersection. It didn't include an assessment of parking at the commuter rail. Again, the state we're in with COVID, you know, makes that difficult because there isn't the parking density today that we saw pre-COVID. And so it's difficult to assess kind of what that impact on parking will be because we would have to go back in time to make some assumptions for, before COVID and make an assumption that it's going to go back to that. I think, you know, it, it becomes more difficult to finally predict traffic because there's a lot of unknowns, specifically with people working from home. Commuting patterns changing, less likelihood of using public transportation because of, you know, exposure to other people, the need to social distance, et cetera. So it's, it's difficult to predict any of that.
All right. But in your experience, and again, this is speculation, is it safe to assume that of these 130 units, 10% of them, 10% of the cars, 113 cars or 15 cars might be utilizing commuter rail?
This. Potentially. That's a reasonable assumption.
All right. Okay. Because as I see it now, and I'm down there every day, the parking down there is tight as it is. Okay, thank you.
So the other thing that the report indicated is that a lot of those intersections between the proposed development and the center of Manchester are stressed already today. Um, so we would have to address those issues because this development is coming in and might stress it more. Is that reasonable?
That is, that is reasonable. I think that, you know, if you, if you were to look deeper into the numbers, you'll see that in that future condition, there's more impact just from their assumptions of build volumes, 1% growth per year, which is a reasonable assumption. That has a greater impact than the actual impact of the development. But in total, yes, it shows that intersections that are already stressed will continue to be stressed. You know, average delays predicted for vehicles will increase in some cases notably. So.
Because I, I think one of our challenges is we're in a regional school district with Essex. The School Street is the
Right.
The, the, the traffic line for the school, the junior, middle and senior high school.
Yeah, the schools, the School Street and Plaza Street intersection in the morning had, you know, delays exceeding level of service F, which is, you know, how we grade intersections on an A through F scale, easy to understand. Level of service F today in the morning, likely, you know, driven by that school demand, the school traffic. And it just gets worse with greater average delays when we look at those future conditions.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Eric, this is, could I follow up on that?
Yes, Mr. Go ahead.
Sure. This is Edward Glenn, the Mass Housing Partnership Consultant to the board. You know, recognizing that there's, you know, as you know, sort of an overall issue with some of these intersections, it's not getting any better with this project, then there's some marginal increase in the problem. But it also seems, it's certainly too much to ask this one project to solve a regional problem. Is there any language you could give the board and you maybe to talk about sort of what, what you would think would be a fair share contribution or, you know, some attempt that this project could make, you know, contribution to a study or, you know, working, you know, to provide some way to address this on with some thought to what the fair share of this added impact versus all the background growth might be? Or maybe work with the developer to sort of think that through?
I think that, you know, the, the proposal was that the developer was, was looking as mitigation to fund a a road safety audit at the Route 128 ramp intersections, which is a, you know, reasonable contribution. At the same time, I think there's there are more problems here in need of, in need of some solution. There might be additional. And I have, I have quantified that. I don't know what that would be. You know, it might be a portion of a, you know, a portion of design cost contribution. It could be a commitment to pedestrian-focused improvements, especially given the town's interest in constructing additional sidewalks up to the area of this property and looking at future residential growth along Atwater Avenue. So some, something along those lines, a commitment to a piece of some of these improvements that are necessary without the development, but also benefit.
And so maybe I know, I know a number of these pieces are still sort of evolving. And there may be ways the, the applicant would prefer to contribute or explore, you know, ways to assist. And so I guess what I would just ask Greg, you know, if, by the final memo, if you could sort of look at that full package and say, this seems, you know, to be a fair share, you know, of, of the impact we're seeing, something like that. Thanks.
Sure.
Thank you. So I guess at this point I should ask Mr. Engler for some reaction to this peer review regarding, you know, justification for the smaller sized spaces, the number of parking spaces, problems with the intersections and the need for a compliant sidewalk from the residences down to School Street. Mr. Engler?
I'm sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Jeff Engler, SLV School Street. As we just received the peer review on Monday, we have not prepared a full written response. By the next public hearing, we certainly will. I have a lot of respect for Environmental Partners and Mr. Lucas and have had them peer review many projects. And we look forward to providing a thorough and comprehensive response. They did ask for a fair amount of additional. They did ask for a fair amount of additional backup data and some other supporting data, which we'll be happy to provide. But it's not something that we can provide in just a couple of days. So we will endeavor to provide that in the next couple of weeks of thorough response. I can hit on a couple of highlights to some of the things that Mr. Lucas spoke of. For one, going in no particular order, we feel very comfortable with the size of our parking stalls. Nine by 18 is customary for residential parking garages. Would be happy to, as part of our review, show many residential garages that have those spaces. In fact, Environmental Partners has reviewed many of those garages and in some cases approved, you know, eight foot wide, eight and a half foot wide spaces. So a nine by 18 space, we believe is quite comfortable. And I think in Mr. Lucas's own words, is not an abnormal request. Also, our parking ratio, we'll be glad to provide a long list of projects of a similar nature rental in a, in a, you know, non-mass transit location. And I think what that's gonna show is how we have really surplus parking. We, we have, I think our ratio here is 1/8, give or take, for a multifamily rental project. That's high and, and will, the data will bear it out. I mean, our two projects under construction in Winchester, similar projects, similar demographic, 1.5 and I think 1.6. So far less spots on a per unit basis than what we provided here. But we'll let the data speak for itself, but we're very comfortable with the ratio that we proposed. In fact, we think we'll have a surplus of spaces, but we understand the town. And to a lesser degree, residents are concerned, or the neighbors, excuse me, are concerned about the supply. But we'll include all that in our response. We'll also show within the garage, the turning movements that cars can safely, I mean, our, our our lanes and our aisle widths are all industry standard. So we're not concerned about maneuverability in the garage. But we have templates and we can provide that to Mr. Lucas and his associates to confirm that everything works. And justification. Also, you know, we would be happy to talk to Mr. Lucas in more detail about some of his, or some mitigation ideas, whether Scott Thornton, who's on the call tonight from Vennas, or Jeff Dirk, who's our primary project manager, you know, we, we recognize that there are some areas that could need some, some help. But as 40B requires, and as somebody stated earlier, we're not required to solve existing conditions. We're only required to address our incremental impacts. And we certainly will be willing to do that in this case. And then lastly, and Mr. Lucas, you know, does not have, in fairness to him, the benefit of the last 14 months of discussion on this project, but the second means of egress here is not feasible. We've looked at it. It just can't work with various topographical and environmental considerations. What Mr. Lucas probably also is not aware of is we met with the fire chief not once, not twice, but three times and shared the plan with him at length. And the plan that was submitted to the zoning board reflects all of the fire department's requests. Moreover, the fire chief is on record on Zoom with the town saying he has no issues with the access as presented and the fact that we only have one means of egress. He's appined on the plan already and that's a matter of record. And I, I, I know, I can, I know Ms. Sue can dig that up or, or I can go through the archives and provide that as well. But he has looked at this plan quite, quite closely with our whole team on, on several, several instances. So with that said, those are just a few. If people have additional questions. But as I said, we just received the peer review. It's comprehensive. We appreciate it. And we certainly plan to submit a, a full and comprehensive response with the additional data and justification Environmental Partners has requested. And we will endeavor to do that in enough time prior to the next hearing, which we'll talk about at the end of the meeting. With enough time for, for Greg to review it, the zoning board. So we're not just dropping it on your lap, you know, the day of the hearing. So I don't know if anybody has any other traffic related questions. But, but that's where we are at this point in time.
Yeah, hold on a minute. I have one more question, but I would ask the public to not use the chat feature. We are not taking public input on this part of the meeting. We'll be taking that at the next meeting. Thank you. So it was my understanding that if there was a sidewalk on the public way, that a development was required to connect a sidewalk from their development down to the public way. When the town commented on the, made its comments with respect to your application to mass housing, they stated that under their, their streets, their complete streets policy, that they would extend the sidewalk on School Street up to your development in conjunction with doing the infrastructure changes to School Street with respect to utilities. So I was kind of surprised as to why a sidewalk is not included in the application that you submitted to us.
A sidewalk was not included because there is no sidewalk in School Street, nor is there a formal plan to include one. We know that's been discussed. But we thought it was, for lack of a better word, silly to build a sidewalk where there's, there's no sidewalk in School Street. So there would be no connectivity. There would be no pedestrian accommodation anywhere at the front of our site. You know, would we consider including a sidewalk if, if or when the town constructed sidewalks in School Street that we could tie into? You know, we would consider that, but as of now, there's no plan on the table. We have not seen any funding. And, and there's no, there's no sidewalk there now. So that was our rationale.
The town has gone on record with the state that they do intend to extend the sidewalk out School Street. The Architectural Access Board issued an opinion to the town in their meeting on July 12th. And they voted that 521 CMR 20.2 would require the developer to build an accessible route to the public way. So we're looking for, we would be looking for a revised plan reflecting a sidewalk and also an explanation regarding how that would impact the snow removal plan and impact the infrastructure blasting and those types of things. Is that something you can provide to us?
Well, we'll look at that. Is that something that, are those documents public record? Is that something that Sue or the board administrator can provide to us? Have funds been appropriated for that, that work? Is there a, is there a plan that's been developed? Those are some of the things that we would, we would want to understand.
Okay.
Or, or if you, if you, if the board authorizes me, I could work with Mr. Glenn or, or Mrs. Brown or whomever, you know, the point person is to try to understand more about that.
Okay, we'll, we'll talk internally and, but I'll get you that, the information regarding the ruling.
Okay. So I do have one question or request. This is something Environmental Partners frequently does. If they could provide their letter in Word format, what we can do, which we find is easiest for all parties involved, is embed our responses and comments directly within their letter. That way, everything is contained in one document rather than a, an EP letter, you know, dated July 10th, and we have a separate letter and then they have a separate letter. We can kind of put our response in italics right below their question or comment, and then they can provide a response. We, we've done that with Environmental Partners in the past. We found it to be effective. But I just want to make sure it's okay with the board and okay with Greg to proceed in that manner.
Yeah, that's, that's no problem on our part. As, as Jeff mentioned, that's a common thing that we do to, to make it easier for them to provide responses and have it all contained within one document.
Yeah, I, I second that. And I think it's not just easier for them, but easier for, you know, for the, for the board and for, for Sue and whoever's putting the, you know, the conditions together. Really with all this, we're looking for a clean bill of health on each of these peer reviews. And that's the easiest way to know we got there.
Right.
Sure.
So many, so many of the, I mean, and this will hold true for civil engineering. This will hold true for the other peer review. I mean, I would say, you know, just generally speaking, on the EP letter, probably 60 to 70% of the requests or items will probably be addressed immediately and to, to Mr. Lucas's satisfaction, I hope. And then, you know, there may be, you know, 20 to 25% that will require some iterative communication about this is what we're suggesting. What do you think? And, and, and it'll be that way for all the peer review, but we didn't see anything candidly, you know, off the wall, outrageous, crazy in EP's letter. It's just gonna take some time for us to, to respond to everything that, that Greg and his team requested.
Thank you. Any more questions? Any more thoughts from the zoning board regarding traffic? Okay.
Sarah, I have one question.
Who's that?
I don't know if this, it's James. Are there gonna be, I, I haven't heard any mention of traffic control or stoplights? Is that part of our future on School Street or elsewhere in the community as a result of this and other developments? Or is that a completely irrelevant question?
Well, I think.
Yeah, I could try to answer that and Greg can chime in as could Scott, but you know, traffic lights are, are pretty formulaic. In other words, you have to meet, I forget if it's eight or 10 warrant articles in order to justify a light. You can't just say, we want a light and not meet those articles. So you know, certainly it's something that, that, that I know our team will look at and, and EP, but that, that's a, a pretty kind of formulaic milestones, if you will, that you have to hit in order to justify those kinds of measures in different locations. Then I guess the better way to say it's not really discretionary, but Greg can comment on that.
I could confirm that there are, there's nine warrants that exist. One of them needs to be met to justify the installation of a traffic signal. Mastod expect to see, without getting into too much detail, Mastod expects to see one of those warrants, which is the eight hour warrant, which sets thresholds for volumes throughout, within eight hours of the day that you need to exceed those thresholds and then a traffic signal is warranted. So that's something that would need to look deeper into the data to determine if that is met. I don't know if we have enough data throughout the day. We only pick our data. So to evaluate that with the data presented within the traffic impact assessment, but it's certainly something if there's some commitment to looking at additional study of these, of these intersections, specifically the ramp intersections, which have some notable turning volumes. Something that could be proposed to, to, to do that additional study.
Perfect. Thank you both.
Eric, can I make one last request of the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Glenn.
Thanks. Sorry to jump in again, but on this issue about the, the fire department's review and the, the single access or emergency access. You know, it seems like if, if you've said he's made a comment on the record that he's okay with it, you know, the fire chief has, that's great to hear. I think one thing we need to be concerned about is this board can only really make decisions based on this record, the record in this hearing process. So if he said it, that's great. But if you could get him to give us a letter, you know, whether Sue can do that or whether you can do that, that, then the board has it. Cause right now what they have is a letter from their peer reviewer saying there's a concern here and nothing meeting that other than something happening outside the process. So if you can get that in, that would be, you know, really, I, I suspect that's a big concern for a lot of the abutters. You know, it's been raised a lot throughout the process. So anything we could have to document it, put on the website, in the files. You know, then I think the board can, you know, have some peace of mind about the issue being addressed. They still may, may have other concerns.
All right. We, we can do that. I mean, and, and procedurally, I understand and agree with you. Just for the record, the plan that he reviewed is identical to the plan that was submitted for the comp permit. So it's not like, you know, we've made changes, but we can share it with them again and ask them to put something in writing.
Thanks.
Thank you. Jim Dietrich?
Yes, further to Mr. Glenn's recent comment. I think it would be appropriate for us to ask the fire chief to appear at some point at one of our hearings, either by Zoom or in person, to talk about this issue. And I say this only because a year or two ago, there was a serious fire in town and the fire equipment couldn't get to the fire. And it wasn't because of lack of a road. It was because of snow, but it points out the necessity of emergency access. And it brings it home. And when you have a building with as many people in it as is being proposed to not have emergency, a secondary emergency access to the property, I believe is a serious concern and a safety concern. And it would be nice to hear what some of the professionals have to say, either in writing or in person. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. We'll invite the fire chief to our meeting on the 26th, assuming that's the next meeting. Thank you, Mr. Lucas. I think we're finished with traffic for tonight. Thank you for your input. I'm now gonna move to the second item on the agenda, which is at our last meeting, we had indicated that our request for a safe harbor was denied by the state. And at the last meeting, we had not yet made a determination as to whether or not to file an appeal. And I wanted to just explain to members of the public what we did. So we did not file for an appeal and I'll give you the reasons why. When we filed for a safe harbor, it was on the basis that we had made progress under our approved housing production plan based on the Potterhouse Lane project. The state denied it since to demonstrate progress on the housing production plan, 11 units had to be certified by the state and added to the SHI during the calendar year prior to the filing of the 40B comprehensive permit application was submitted to the ZBA and it was submitted to the ZBA on September 27, 2021. That request for certification was not made by the town to the state and no base, so we had no basis for an appeal. Any appeal would have gone to the Housing Appeals Committee, which is a division of the DHCD and which is the same entity to which the developer will appeal if he is not satisfied with our decision on the application. Thus, we didn't want to irritate the committee with a frivolous lawsuit. Finally, although it would have told the time of the six month period with when, for concluding the public hearing, the ZBA would not have been allowed to work on the application during the appeal process. So we would not have gained quote unquote, any extra time. We felt it was in the best interest of the town to proceed with a review of the application and work with the developer to extend the review period if wanted. Any members of the board have any additional comments on that matter? Any members of the board have any additional comments on that matter?
Sarah, it appears that James may be speaking, but he's on mute. I don't know.
All right, I clicked it, but it didn't it didn't work. Uh, this is. I I don't I don't know if it's helpful or not, but I think the public, um. Probably should know, we did not make this decision in a vacuum. This was made under the advice of counsel as well. Um, and hopefully that's that's an important consideration.
Thank you, James. The next item on the agenda. That I wish to take up is the mass housing letter to Mr. Engler on December tenth, twenty-twenty-one. Suspending his ability to submit future forty B applications. Um. I I have a couple of questions, um. And then, um, I'll ask Mr. Engler to to speak to the matter. Um. One thing that the board would like is. A certif- a certification regarding the sanctuary at Manchester by the Sea made to the Manchester by the Seas zoning board. A specific certification with respect to our project. Um, I would also like copies of the correspondence, which. You sent to Mass Housing in response to the letter. And would like to know. How the suspension impacts your financing for our project. So, Mr. Engler, would you like to speak to that and give us additional information?
Yeah, I would be I would be happy to, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Relative to the certification, um, is that something your counsel could provide to my counsel specifically? What the town is looking for? Or should I presume? Should I presume it's a certification consistent with what I've already provided? To Mass Housing, of which this project is captured by that. Uh, I just want to make sure I'm giving the board what it's asking for. So, uh, if Mr. Pucci could provide. Uh, either to Mr. Costa, who's joining us tonight, or Mr. Talman. Specifically what the board requests, I I will have no problem providing that certification.
Okay, I'll do that. Thank you.
Secondly, uh, my correspondence to Mass Housing is a matter of record, but. Uh, if the town wants it, I can I can provide that, but it is a matter of public record. So. Um, and then the third question, oh, relative to the status and whether that will have any impact on the financing of this project. Uh, none whatsoever. I mean, as as the board is aware, on, um. December thirteenth, Mass Housing's general counsel provided written correspondence. Authorizing and allowing me to continue to work on any and all projects which I'm involved. Uh, one of which is, uh, S L V School Street. Um, so it has no impact on these proceedings in any way, shape or form. Um, nor the financing, nor any part of the process. So. Um, you know, don't take my word for it. I I know. I know that many have called Mass Housing about this issue, and I I feel quite comfortable that they would say likewise. Um, so, um. You know. The issues identified by Mass Housing. Uh, and the matter at hand were were not about my participation. Um, as a developer, the particulars of the development. I mean, basically, you know, in summary, Mass Housing wanted an individual Dean Barron to have zero involvement in the project, other than it's the seller of the land. Um, but Mr. Barron did maintain a limited role during the permitting process, you know, which was contrary to my representation. They want to dean out entirely. He wasn't entirely out. His participation was the issue, not once again, the project or or anything of that nature. And I I take responsibility for allowing that relationship to continue. Um, so the issue relative to this project has been resolved with Mass Housing. And their correspondence is, is, you know, allowing me to move forward on this and many other projects. So. Um, if there's anything else I can add to that, you know, I'd be happy to. Um, obviously, I mean, this application is, you know, before the Z B A is not about Jeff Engler. Um. Now, it's about the particulars of the development. It's about Mass Housing's findings during the site approval process relative to. You know, where the town is relative to the ten percent and other safe harbors and the merits of the project. And, you know, none of the things that happened in in Wellesley. You know, have any, I I think Mass Housing would opine to have any. Kind of relevance to that. Um, so, you know, with that said, I'd be turn it over back to you, Madam Chair, if there's any additional questions.
Anyone from the board? Jim Dietrich?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Would you or could you, uh, enlighten everyone who's connected with this Zoom meeting? As to the extent of Mass Housing's, uh, issues with Mr. Engler, and. He keeps referring to existing projects. Um. I had thought that. Their comments to him or their issues with him would involve any new projects. Um, and I'm not clear about that, and perhaps either you can explain it to the public, or maybe Mr. Engler, and you can explain it to everyone. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. I'll I'll explain what I understand from this letter, and we will put the. On the action. But this letter also requires Mr. Engler to certify. That he did not have any misrepresentations on any of the other forty-four. Applications which are currently in process. Therefore, as a Z B A, we have, in my opinion, an added due diligence to ensure that. There are no misrepresentations in the application that that was submitted to us for review. So I believe it does impact. All his existing projects.
Well. The the only clarification to that I would make is basically. Mass Housing, any project that was started before December tenth, two thousand twenty-one. Is I'm authorized and allowed to continue to work on. Mass Housing temporarily suspended me from submitting any new applications. From December tenth to two thousand twenty-one forward. So that was the line of demarcation. Um, I think, Mr. Dietrich, that answers your question, but hopefully it does, but.
Sarah?
Yes, Mr. Pucci.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Um, George Pucci from Town Council's office. I I just wanted to. Add a little clarity, um, on that issue, um. And I I don't disagree with Mr. Engler's, uh, summary of of that letter. Um, on the inquiry from Mr. Dietrich, you know, the the letter really speaks for itself. So if if it ends up getting posted. You know, people can read it and and as I said, it really does speak for itself that. It does suspend, um, applications going forward. Uh, based on that issue that came up in the Wellesley matter. The letter, though, did go on, and it listed a number of projects that were already, uh, pending or had received P Ls or otherwise. Uh, the sanctuary project for, um, Manchester by the Sea was specifically listed in that list of, um. Projects that 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 suspension does not apply to. Uh, but with regard to those projects, um, including the Manchester by the Sea project. Uh, Mr. Engler has to provide a certification to Mass Housing. Um, essentially, and again, this is set forth in the letter, which you can read. Um, essentially, uh, certifying that there are no misleading statements or omissions of fact. Um, et cetera, uh, with regard to. Uh, submissions to Mass Housing with regard to those listed projects, including the Manchester by the Sea project. Uh, so that that is what, um, Mr. Engler has to certify to, uh, Mass Housing. Um, the the certification that you requested, Sarah. I'm assuming you're just looking for a copy of what Mr. Engler certified to Mass Housing. Um, in which case, you know, his counsel can forward that over to me, and I can forward it. Uh, to you and the board. If you're seeking something further. Um, on that, uh, you know, you can let me know tonight, and I can follow up with with his counsel, but I'm assuming. You're looking for the certification that. He was required to file with, uh, Mass Housing within thirty days of the December tenth. Two thousand twenty-one notice, uh, that that you're referring to.
I was looking for something specific to our application. Not a blanket certification with.
Yeah. We can provide the certification, but as as Madam Chair said. Um, you know, if you want something specific to this project, I would have no issue whatsoever. Um, providing that and, uh. Or or any project I'm involved with. I mean, I want to state for the record, you know. I've made no false representations on any project. Um, I've ever written, but I I've made a, you know, I was involved with a guy I shouldn't have been involved with in Wellesley, and that was. Oh, I recognize that.
So Sarah, yeah, thanks.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Pucci.
No, that's okay. Tough by Zoom. Uh, so Sarah, what I'd recommend we do is, um. Mr. English counsel, and I I know Attorney Talman very well, and I'm assuming, uh, Attorney Costa is at his office. If they can just, uh, email a copy of the certification that was provided to Mass Housing, and then I can confer with you, Madam Chair, about. Uh, further specificity, uh, with regard to a certification to the Manchester by the Sea project, uh, specifically.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I hope I answered Mr. Dietrich's question reasonably clearly.
Yes, Mr. Pucci, you did, and I appreciate you adding the additional details. And I appreciate our chairman. Um. Restating that we have to do diligence here because once an issue of. Uh, like this is raised. It is reasonable for the public particularly to have issues with this. And it's important for us that we explore all these things in doing our job. And so I appreciate everyone's help here, including Mr. Englers.
And and Mr. Dietrich, I mean, for the record, I would be happy. To if there are requests or anything that the board needs information wise to provide that. Um, you know, I I certainly understand your your comment, so. Um, to the extent that I can help with your diligence and providing information, or if any questions come up. I'm offering my assistance.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is. The comprehensive permit application and whether there are questions, um. From the Z B A, general questions from the Z B A board regarding the application that was submitted. I can start if people want.
Please do.
I have a couple of questions. Um, one question is. I I'm not particularly familiar with these type of applications. I'll start then. Um, one question I have is, are there any differences between the applications submitted? To the Manchester zoning board of appeals and that that was submitted to Mass Housing?
Is that, Madam Chair, is that question directed to me?
Yes.
Uh, well, I'm not sure how to answer that. There are two different applications. Um, one was submitted to Mass Housing for site approval, which has a set of requirements and. Documents, and then, uh, I submitted a, um. A comprehensive permit application, which is a different application to the Manchester zoning board of appeals. So. I'm not, I'm not trying to be evasive, but I I'm not sure I'm understanding the question. Do you mean, is there a difference between the plans?
Yes, between the plans and the specifics of the plans, the the description of the project, um. That information. Obviously, you didn't submit the transportation study to the state.
Yeah, I mean, there there was additional details provided. Off the top of my head, I could not tell you exactly what those were, but. Um, you know, the material components of the of the plan is was unchanged. Um, from site approval to the comprehensive permit application. So, you know, the density, the access, the. Things of that nature. So, um. Were 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 there additional details on on certain certain plans? Yeah, most likely, which is customary. But I mean, I think the board and its consultants probably would have picked up on the fact that there were, you know, material changes. So. I I'm not sure if I'm answering your question.
Yes, thank you.
Or if there was a specific area or a specific component. That you would like me to to research, but, I mean. You know, we submitted this many months ago, but to the best of my knowledge. Not nothing changed, but as customary, you know, as you're evolving through the schematic process and enhancing the plans. We 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 may make a tweak, we might provide additional details on some engineering plans or the like, but. It's not material to the review or to the, you know, the 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 materiality of the application. I mean, Mr. Glenn, you know, could comment on that, but, um, you know, I I I I think I feel pretty comfortable saying that.
Yeah, when I looked at the summary of the projects on the two submissions. There appeared to me as if there was a difference in the number of parking spaces, and it appeared to me as if the. The square footage of the central amenity area were different. And I have no way of knowing. Which is a correct number, because I was not going to sit there and count the number of parking spaces.
Well, well, I would say this, the number that was submitted to the Manchester Board Board of Appeals are the numbers that you should go on. I mean, customarily, you know, I think we added some parking spaces from the site approval to the comp permit. Um. You know, is it possible that we lost some residential space and added it to the amenity? Um, I would not rule that out, but but none of those rise to, you know, materiality relative to. You know, differences. If we had, if we had, you know, added a story to the building, we're gone, you know, changed the total density or. You know, change the use from from rental to condo or or done anything of that nature. That that's a. You know, that 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 would warrant, you know, Mass Housing getting a, you. Because it's a different program. But, you know, some of the things that you're talking about, I mean, that that happens on virtually every application.
Okay. My next question is with respect to the. Land survey submitted. Um, there were many revision dates on it. Um, for various reasons, and I don't know what those reasons were. Um, but I was wondering is, was there any change in the property boundary lines? Lines between the original survey submitted and the one included in our application?
The original survey being the one we submitted way back when to the Board of Selectmen when we started the public engagement?
Yes. The the original, I mean, the original, you you've, your application included a survey. That had probably eight to ten dates on it. It had an original date and had various. Uh, amendment dates, and I think I don't know what the most recent date was. And I'm just wondering if any of the property lines changed between the original iteration and the most recent iteration. The boundary lines.
Um, could I endeavor to provide you? Um, could I endeavor to provide you? I don't want to. Honestly, I don't remember. I mean, I wasn't. Those are issues I I leave to my legal counsel and my survey team and civil engineer. But I certainly could provide that information to you. Um, relative to differences between the original survey and, I mean, and and ultimately what we submitted.
That would be great. And if there were changes, just explain what the changes are and why.
Yep, sure.
And then my other comment, I guess, and I'm just not really familiar with these applications is. The application. Seems to have a lot of pictures in it. And it seems to be a little sparse on details. Um, so I don't know is if is the expectation. That we will request all of those additional. Details. From you that they're not normally submitted with the application.
Could you be more specific relative to what details were you believe were omitted or you're looking for?
Yeah, so I didn't see any type of an environmental report in the application. I didn't see any type of geotech report. I didn't see any wastewater treatment plan. Um, and and no documentation regarding, you know, the blasting that's required. Um, the infrastructures required um and the construction sequence. All that type of missing.
I I I understand what you're, I understand your question better now. Um, those are not required as part of the forty B process, or at least the initial application. Um, are those things that sometimes are requested during the public hearing process? Yeah, they can be requested, um, but you know, full geotechnical, we we have some preliminary geotechnical. Information that we've since provided to Sue. I mean, we have a phase one environmental analysis, which I believe has been submitted for the record. Um, so we do have some of that, but, you know, under forty B, you're required to provide schematic plans. And it's at our risk, you know, relative to the constructability and feasibility of those plans. Um, but we're, you know, our our technical team, my geotechnical engineer, my civil engineers, my architects. Are quite confident that we can build the plan as as illustrated on on the plans. But have we done all of that work? No, we haven't because we don't even have a comprehensive permit. So we would customarily do that work. Um, as and it would can be conditioned by the zoning Board of Appeals. That we need to do all that work, so it's not take our word for it. We might do it or we might not do it. The zoning Board of Appeals as part of its issuance of the comprehensive permit. Can require us to do that analysis, which would be required when we move from a schematic set of plans, which I think is. Like thirty-six pages. To a construction. Set of plans for a project like this, which will probably be three hundred and fifty pages. So when we go from schematic to CDs. We need to have all that, you know, more detailed geotechnical information. Uh, I will say on this project, the environmental review. Uh, and what we did through conservation as part of the Yanrad. Was extensive. I mean, more than I've I've done on on most projects. And that's all a matter of record, although albeit, you know, not in this venue. But it was before the Conservation Commission and and that's all on record and. We we have the benefit of that information, which um the town's environmental peer review and. Goddard Consulting, our peer review will certainly, when we get to that. Discussion in future hearings will will be the beneficiary of that information. So that was a long-winded answer, Madam Chair, as to. Why some of those things have not been submitted.
Thank you. Um, Jim Dietrich, do you have any questions? Go ahead in the application.
Not at this moment, Madam Chair.
Brian.
At this point, I'm good. Uh, I'm still reviewing, I'm still listening and still making decisions.
Uh, John.
Um, I guess one sort of concern I have is that, given the. The limitations of the site, you know, as it is, um. You know, without a a full geotech report, uh, you know, I I think once that does come in, you might have some. You know, suggestions uh from your consultant, you know, uh. On, you know, relocating the building, the structure based on. The existing conditions and ledge and and, you know, things that you might find. In that report, so I guess my question is. How extensive is the geotech report that you have right now versus the the full geotech that you expect to receive? You know, at a later state uh before you issue permit set drawings? Because we're gonna have to review that with a peer reviewer as well.
Yeah, no, that's a good question. I I would I would answer it this way. And and we've since submitted this for the record uh several days ago. It's extensive enough to know that the plan that we've provided. Um, can be constructed more or less in the way we've provided and 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 and. In what we've represented. You know, our geotechnical engineer, our civil engineers. They've they've taken, they've done testing, you know, they've done, they've done evaluations. They've walked the site, they've done a whole bunch of preliminary analysis. That um. Has given us enough information, quite candidly, um, to to uh design the plan as we have. Um, I think it's important to know the zoning board, I think, understands this, but, I mean, this plan. A lot of projects, you know, have a very kind of schematic plan and it's and it's. You know, it's it's really raw. While this is a schematic plan, we've spent a ton of time evaluating the site. The wetlands, the topography, the geotechnical conditions. And what we have before you, we believe is the best. Plan in consideration of all of those different elements. And we pushed the building around, we've tried different elevations and and such, and. All the different permutations we've we've considered, you know, there were issues. Um, greater than, you know, what we have before you now, so. That's a long-winded way of saying, do we have a full geotechnical analysis that will provide us and allow us to do? Very detailed CDs? No, we have not done that yet. But we've done enough analysis to know that the way we've graded the road, the way the road works, the way where the building is set, most notably on the site. How the roads and the buildings relate, how the parking garage relates to the residential levels above. We feel very comfortable that what we've provided uh is feasible and constructable. Um, you know, could something shift, you know, a foot um up or down? Yes, of course. I mean, that's within the, you know, the realm of. Of uh moving from schematic to to CDs, and that happens on flat sites. You know, let alone sites like this, so, and that's just the nature of the process, so. Um, but we've submitted that to the record and we, you know, understand that that will be reviewed as part of the peer review eventually.
Now you.
Sarah, Sarah, can I just interject?
Yes.
Quickly, it's George again. Um. So I I just want to sum up a little bit where you're at on that and bring that a little bit more concrete. On the question that you're asking about the details of the plans. It's definitely true that, you know, the application. Only requires a certain um degree of completeness for uh plans, and certainly they're preliminary. Um, in many respects. The way the way this hearing uh started is a little unusual because you have the safe harbor issue and. You know, you had a number of meetings and continuances while that issue was being fleshed out. Uh, typically, though, you know, the the first hearing. Date right out of the gate, you'd hear an initial presentation from the applicant, and then you'd go right to, you know, the issue of what peer review uh you would be seeking. So um. You know, final uh plans um. And come and insurance that those final plans uh comply with the conditions of your permit in the event that you issue a permit. And approval with conditions. That would be, you know, subject to to later on in the process, like prior to issuance of a building permit or. Certificate of occupancy, there are certain um milestones that will be um. In place to ensure that final plans are in accordance with. Any conditions. But as you go through your public hearing process. Your peer reviewers are going to weigh into you um about what further details are necessary, you know, before you get to that stage, before you're ready. To decide whether to to grant the permit or deny the permit. And if you're going to grant the permit, what conditions you would impose. So I, you know, I just want to, I know you're going through this process, but I just want to. You know, specify, you know, under the regulations, for instance, civil engineering, transportation, which you're addressing tonight. Environmental resources, design review of buildings on site. Uh, all of those issues you're you're undertaking this process with peer review. Those peer reviewers are going to weigh into you. In addition to any local department heads or uh local officials. Other boards, uh such as the Conservation Commission, you take all of that into account, and if there are um. If there are inadequacies in terms of the level of detail that you have now. Uh, with regard to those specific issues, then you seek um. To get further clarification and and further details on plans as part of your comprehensive permit hearing. Process before you're at at the stage where you can decide whether to, you know, grant the permit with conditions or deny the permit. Uh, so, you know, hopefully that that kind of. Clarifies for you, um, you know, kind of the process that you'll go through. Um, that that absolutely. Um, if it's warranted and they're and they're reasonable requirements of in terms of a further details that you're. Uh, requiring uh be presented to you as part of this process. Uh, then you will get that, uh, you'll have the ability to get those further details in your uh hearing process.
Oh, so when do we, when would we expect to receive written justification? Regarding why each of the waivers is needed? All we have is a list of waivers. There are nothing, nothing telling us why they're needed. When do we see that?
Yeah, the the first place, and you know, really, the waivers is where the rubber meets the road because, you know, you go through those and. Uh, you determine what actually are needed to build the project and and whatnot. That typically comes. Later in the process af- after you've he heard some of the commentary that that comes down. For instance, you you already started on the transportation aspect. And and your peer reviewer weighed in tonight preliminarily about the parking space issue. So that's probably a waiver that the applicant is going to be seeking in terms, I I don't have it in front of me, but I imagine your bylaw. Has certain requirements for dimensions and parking ratio. Uh, your peer reviewer is weighing in on that. Uh, that the applicant will be seeking a waiver to the extent it's necessary, and then you have to decide that, you know, is is a waiver warranted? Do do you adequately protect local concerns um in the event you were to grant the waiver? Uh, so so typically that. Uh, issue about, you know, determination of waivers will come later on in your process. When when you've received more uh input from the peer reviewers on the various uh issues that are before you. Um, and, you know. Waivers can be, can take a couple of hearing sessions when when you're ready to start going through them. And, you know, the board typically will vote on them sort of waiver by waiver. Um, and then with, you know, with a spreadsheet that would would eventually be incorporated into your decision. So it it would typically come a little later in the process when you've received more information. Both from the applicant about what the applicant needs in terms of waivers. And and input from your peer reviewers and your uh local departments as to um their take. On uh the waiver, are are local concerns adequately protected in the event that you were to grant a waiver, say on. Parking issues, setbacks, uh height, you know, all of these issues, um stormwater issues. You know, do you have a local bylaw on that? Um, what are you doing on? You know, has conservation weighed in on this? Are there local bylaw provisions that? You know, you you want to account for in your decision? All all of this, you really have to get the input. Um, as your process proceeds, so I'd I'd kind of recommend going through them. In kind of a, you know, topic by topic basis, like for for instance, tonight you started with transportation. You're going to complete that. At one point, I would address environmental issues. Uh, site engineering issues um and and get that input and and you'll see the. The further detail that you'll you'll need as the process proceeds.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, if I would, and I agree with everything counsel said, uh, customarily. The waivers are done at the end because. When you go through peer review, there may thing, there may be things changed to the plan. That makes the waiver obsolete, we no longer need it. Or something changes and we have to add a waiver. So I think it's a better use of everybody's time to wait to the end of once. Once we've gone through peer review, once we've satisfied your traffic consultant, your civil engineering consultant, et cetera, et cetera. And feel like the plan is the plan. At that point, we, as the applicant, will re-review our waiver list. As we have the right to do, maybe cross some things off, maybe say, well, you know, if we. Do a little bit more here, we don't need this waiver, and then, you know, we'll have a final set of waivers to discuss. Uh, at the back end of the public hearing that we believe will be necessary to build the plan as proposed. Um, and we find that to be, you know, the an effective use of everybody's time to use that approach.
Thank you. Do any members of the Board have questions on this? Are you more enlightened than I am? Okay.
Actually, Sarah, if I could, I mean, I would just second what what George said and and point out that's the importance of getting the. Peer review on board, which, you know, we have traffic and and Sue and I have been working with the applicant to get. The civil and geotechnical and the environmental lined up. Um, so that we could have those queued up, and they can review this and say what other information is needed. And review the waivers, conditions, all that stuff.
Okay. Um. Yeah, so the next item on the agenda is the environmental peer review proposals. Um. We received three proposals in this week. Um, from BSC, Beta, and Beal and Thomas. Um, we have not yet looked at those. Um. I have. Asked the Conservation Commission to take a look at those proposals to see if there's any items we should be. Um, identifying um that might impact our decision. Um. I've also asked Kong Kong to. Help us. Create a list of maybe some additional information that they think uh will be needed in the process. Um, so we know what to ask for. Um, my plan is that the board will review. Those. Peer review proposals and we'll get input from the Kong Kong so that we would be able to make that selection. Um, at a next scheduled meeting on January twenty-sixth. Does that make sense to the board?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, um, Sue Brown. Where do we stand on the civil engineering? RFPs?
So that RFP went out and it was, uh, it has a due date of January seventeenth. Which is coming right up. I have, um, having just received the um. The preliminary geotechnical um report, we didn't have that in our packet when we um. First sent the RFP to the various firms, so I sent that to them all. They each received that. Um, today or yesterday. Um. I just want to note that, um, if you select the um environmental peer reviewer on January twenty-sixth. That um. Across the board, they said that they would be able to have a first report. Um, between three to five weeks, so. Couple of them said three to four weeks. One of them said three to five weeks, so we just need to, I just want you to keep that in mind so that. It's not like two weeks later, they'll be able to do it. It will kind of take that month to get them on board and to do it, so. We couldn't expect them that until the last week in February.
Okay.
And so maybe, I I I mean, I would suggest that maybe we could do both. Um, environmental and um and um. environmental and and site civil and geotech at the next meeting. Because if you receive them all by the 17th, that would give nine days to to review. I know they're a little bit heavy sometimes, but I think they're, I think they're fairly straightforward and and they've all been providing samples of what their peer review letters look like. So that would be my recommendation. And I would, and I would work to get out to Architectural One next. So we'd like to have them all lined up.
Because some of them may take longer than others. Come back. So you haven't heard from the civil engineering site plan one yet to know what that timeline is going to be?
Correct, that RFP is not, their responses to that RFP are not due until the 17th.
Okay. Any members of the Board have questions on that?
I have a question, Sarah. Sue, did you say earlier that you received a Phase One ESA from the developer?
Is that a geotechnical report?
No, it's an environmental report, it's a Phase One site assessment.
So I I don't recall seeing that, Jeff. So if you could check and see if we have that, I think it would be helpful to have that Phase One environmental report in our records. I don't recall seeing it.
Yeah, I just, I remember someone said it about a half hour ago. And I know that I haven't seen that report and it's not listed as a, as an exhibit in any of these peer review proposals. So I'm just, does one exist, Mr. Engler?
Yeah, we can. We can provide that. I would imagine, I think it was provided, and forgive me, I think the town has it, it was part of the whole discussion with the Board of Selectmen when we were attempting to do a friendly 40B last year. But I'll resubmit it for this record.
Yeah, I want to make sure that everything
We'll keep this record completely.
Yes.
Understood.
So there's no question as to what version it might have been?
Yep, I understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I, and I believe you all did receive the geotechnical.
Wasn't it a link?
Yes, yeah, it's quite a large document, so it would have been a link to it.
Okay. So our next meeting will be January 26, Thursday, Wednesday, January 26 at 7:00 PM. To have an additional discussion regarding traffic, any information? Hopefully, Mr. Engler, will you be able to get the responses to the traffic peer review by then?
You beat me to the punch, Madam Chair. I've talked to my, to my team and we're not, two, two weeks is is just a little too aggressive for us. What we're going to do is just following, I would say, two and a half to three weeks, we'll have a full written response in which should provide, Mr. Lucas, you know, if you guys are planning to meet every two weeks, I forget where, I mean, so the 26th, that would be what, February 12th or so, give or take? We should be able to get the Board and Mr. Lucas the full response, you know, four, five, six, seven days in advance of that hearing. So we would expect to discuss traffic in two hearings just because EP asks for a lot of stuff. And it's going to, I, that was my first question to Ben As, is how long is it going to take you guys to pull all this together? And they said three to four weeks. And I said, well, you guys, you know, you got to do it faster than that. So, you know, I think two and a half to three weeks. So that's a long-winded way of saying, on the 26th, most, it'll be mostly you guys selecting the additional peer reviews, but we're not going to be presenting traffic until the following hearing.
Which would be?
The ninth.
The the ninth, and so you're saying the ninth is too tight? So
If that's, if that's four weeks from tonight, that works.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'm saying that it's going to take us, call it three weeks, to turn around the report, get it submitted to to your peer reviewer and to the Board. Obviously, you'll get it same time the peer reviewer does because we don't want to drop it on your lap today of the hearing.
Right, okay. We're good with that. We also don't mind skipping a meeting if we have to. We're a little bit overwhelmed. So with that, I'll move out of the public hearing and move on to administrative matters.
Sarah, I'm sorry, you you really should take a vote formally to continue the public hearing to the date and time certain.
Sorry, okay.
No problem.
Okay, before we do that, Daniel Hill wants to be recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just hoping that there may be an opportunity for the public to provide some comments tonight. We had prepared some comments on on the traffic issue. And I did want to respond to some of the points that were raised during the meeting tonight.
We would like to defer that to the meeting on the 26th.
Okay, can I just ask one, can I just ask one question, though? Because it's really quite timely and I I haven't really had the opportunity to ask it. Is that okay?
Sure.
Thank you. We had asked back in October for the Board to ask the developer to provide the test pit logs and the groundwater elevation data that we know the developer has but has not provided. And this, this is very essential to to the, to the review of this project by every, every peer reviewer and including the public. Can we ask that the applicant provide that data to the Board? And will the Board ask the applicant to do that?
My expectation was that that would be asked as part of the environmental ask we'll make because it didn't have anything to do with traffic.
Well, I agree, but it it has to do with engineering and hydrology. So it's not just environmental. And the the longer we wait to get that data, the harder it is for everybody to be able to absorb it and turn it around. So it, it, we, we, we'd recommend that the data be provided to the Board now. There's no, there's no reason not to have that data provided and filed with the Board.
Dan, have you seen the full stormwater management analysis that we submitted, the 300-page document?
Yes.
And that was not adequate?
No, it's not in there, Jeff. You yet, you haven't provided the the test pit logs or the test pit locations. And I just checked your geotech report and the test pit locations are on there, but still the logs, the data is not in there.
All right, let's see what, I'll see what we can do. I apologize if I missed that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dale. I move to continue the public hearing on the comprehensive permit with a 40B application, Jeffrey Engler of SLV School Street LLC to January 26, whoop, yeah, January 26, 2022 at 7:00 PM. Do I have a second? Jim seconds. I'll take a roll call vote. Jim?
I agree.
John?
I agree, Sarah, but as you know, I'm not going to be around for that meeting. So can I give you my suggestion for the peer review proposal in advance of that?
Sure.
Out of town? All right, thank you.
Sean?
Approved.
Brian?
Approved.
Catherine?
Yes, approved.
James?
Approved.
And Sarah Pooch. Thank you, Mr. Pucci, for keeping us straight.
On, on the topic of keeping you straight, just one question, maybe for, for, for Town Council. If you have one member who can't make that meeting, it sounds like it's going to be a fairly administrative meeting, really just selecting a peer review consultant. I would hate for him to use as one free Mullen rule pass when really nothing is discussed, you know, unless you're taking public input or anything. Is there any way to to have it be, George, anything?
It it's tough, it's a, it's a great comment. I was thinking the same thing, but it really is not. You can't call, you know, you can't call it just an administrative matter. It, it is a continuance of the public hearing. And just to fill everybody in, what Ezra's question is, is that member, you know, under, under the Mullen rule, he can miss one hearing session if he then reviews the record of that session and certifies that under Mullen. But he can't miss more than one hearing session. So if, if you're anticipating that you might need to miss another, even for a scheduling conflict, you you need to think about that, that you you might be missing an eligible member. Having said that, if it, if it ends up that that member really does need to meet, needs to miss another session, you know, you you'll know that in advance and maybe you would avoid that date as a potential continuance date to to save him from missing one meeting. So do you, do you see what we're saying, Sarah?
Yeah, what happens if I have nobody left at the end? I mean, one meeting is a challenge.
Oh, it, it's something that you need to be aware of at at the beginning. You know, it's not a super majority you need. It's just a simple majority vote to to grant or deny the permit. But it is definitely a concern in a lengthy hearing process, you know, such as 40B, that somebody, somebody might have to miss more than one hearing session. But typically, if you know that in advance, you know, there are ways of dealing with it. Like I said, if, if a member, you're setting these up, you know, on, on with some, you know, clarity of of like, today's the 12th and then you're putting it for the 26th and then you're looking at February 9, probably February 23. If you know in advance that a member has to miss one of those sessions, maybe you pick a different date for that particular continued hearing session. So it, as long as you're aware of it in advance that you can only miss the one hearing session, you know, just be aware of it and and be prepared to deal with that accordingly. You know, don't knowingly go ahead with a hearing session if you know that you're jeopardizing the ability of one of the members to vote on the application.
Hey, Sarah, I'll make, I'll, I'll figure out a way to call in. I'm just not going to be out of town in Utah, but I'll be available.
Fantastic, thank you, John.
I don't anticipate this to be a long meeting anyway.
Right.
I don't want to get mullenized, so.
Thanks, John.
Okay, so now we're going to move to administrative matters. Did people have a chance to review the minutes from, what was it, December 8, 7?
I'll get, I'll get myself off the clock if you're done with me tonight, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Nice to see you. See you next time, bye.
Did people review the minutes that were sent out earlier this week?
Yeah, I did.
Yes.
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 Can I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion.
Sean White makes a motion, do I have a second?
Second, Catherine.
Catherine seconds. I'll take a roll call vote. Sean?
Approved.
Jim?
Approved.
Catherine?
Approved.
John?
Yes, approved.
Brian?
Approved.
James? And Sarah votes, yes, okay, thank you. Get those on the website. Is there any other matter that we need to discuss?
Sarah, are you, what are you doing with the chat comments from this meeting? Are they going to be part of the public record or?
Would somebody like to pull them down?
I don't know how to do that. Let me, let me see. I can name the screen shot them. Does anyone know how to do that?
I'm, I'm sure Tiffany does. I don't know if Tiffany is still on the line.
I think Sean did it once before.
Yeah, I just, I just saved them.
Thank you, Sean. Sue, is there a way to shut off chat?
Yes, and I meant to, if it had continued, I was going to let you know that Tiffany said if you just make her the co-host, she could have turned it off. But I think you can disable it at the very beginning of the meeting. So when we set up a meeting, they should be already disabled. I think that would be helpful.
Because it's not an option when I set up a meeting.
Yeah, maybe, I'm sure Tiffany can do it. I don't know if she's still on here, but we'll make, we'll make sure she does that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
Sarah, I have a question.
Yeah.
This is regarding the Mullen rule. And I'm guessing in an era of a pandemic and COVID, it may be, I don't know if it's likely, but it's probable that one or more of us may have to miss a meeting due to contracting COVID. And that, that's my first observation. And I'm sure the Mullen law isn't written when a pandemic was in effect. The second thing is, we do have alternates. And I don't know how that impacts. Do we have to have consistent, the same five voting members present for all but one meeting? I'm just curious how all that works.
Now, we're not voting on the comprehensive permit until the end. So if we have two people who've missed two meetings, it's the remaining five who will vote.
Oh, I see, okay.
If we have four people who've missed two meetings, we can't take a vote. We have to be very cognizant of the issue.
In light of COVID, how does that work? Would there, would there be some kind of precedent?
It hasn't changed, it hasn't changed. The, the difference with COVID is you can do things remotely.
That's true.
Right, which is a reason to keep these meetings remote as long as we can.
Okay, and I'm not suggesting that I won't be available. I'm just wondering about what, I'm wondering about the what-if scenarios, that's all.
It's a challenge.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks. Any more questions?
Sarah, other questions? Speaking of, do you envision that going forward, maybe when you're like, comes springtime, the, the opportunity might be to change the, the Wednesday meeting to a Thursday meeting? Do you see that as a possibility, stay in a six period of time?
Yeah, I think we, I need to get input from the Board as to, I mean, we, we chose Wednesday because everyone agreed to it. If people no longer agree with that date, then we need to figure out what's appropriate. This is obviously an enormous challenge for us because it's a lot of meetings.
I know, I, I get that, it's just that.
And people didn't buy into it.
I don't give it up my time, it's just that, I, I, you know, I know that Sean, I have other commitments on Wednesday nights that we're putting aside for this.
Is it every Wednesday? Is it every Wednesday?
Three Wednesdays a month right now, right? Yeah. We've got the first and the, the second and the fourth Wednesdays dedicated to this 40B and then the regularly scheduled third Wednesday of the month for the rest of town business.
Right, and we, we can't change the third week of the month because that's a posted schedule. Okay.
We, you said that you were committed for a couple of weeks or a month due to your other obligations. When, and my question is this, is that can we consider going after you were done with your obligations, which you said would probably happen right through, what, March?
Yeah, I, I need to get something definitive from each person on the Board regarding what days they're available.
Right, no, I don't expect.
Because if I pick Thursday, then somebody else isn't going to be available Thursday. So I, I think that it's a valid discussion to have. And I just need to understand what people's other obligations are because I have to flip things around. And I can do it, it just, you know, I, I don't want meetings on Tuesdays because the, the timeline for getting the agendas in is too long.
Okay, something, something just to consider, thank you.
Yes, yeah, so just let me know what your commitments are and I'll try to juggle things around.
I think it's entirely possible, but with school vacations coming up and other people may be taking vacations, that many of us may have to miss at least one meeting, if not more than one. And after hearing what Attorney Pucci said, that kind of scares the heck out of me. And I'm only an alternate, and so I'm not as important as all you regulars. But it seems that there's a lot. it seems that there's a lot, there's not a whole lot of flexibility in this. We're, we're asked to make decisions for the town, and we're all volunteers, and we're all peddling as hard as we can. But it seems like there's not a lot of exceptions to the rule available at the moment.
Well, I, I, I think the other option is to figure out if we could drop down to 140B meeting a month, and how that would impact the overall timeline.
I, I was just going to suggest that, actually, that I know we've, it's been important to have meetings to get the peer review going, but I'm actually a big believer in get more done in between the meetings and use the meetings most efficiently. So once you have your peer reviewers all on board, they can be meeting with the applicant, with town officials, working everything out, resolving the issues, and bringing to you the kind of finished package or the key sticking points. Um, so we may be perfectly fine to do that with, you know, with, with one meeting. We don't need to have bi-weekly progress reports where the applicant says, I'm trying to get to it. You know, yes, I gave you that. He gave me back. You just want to say, solve it and then bring it to us, right? And so in some ways, that might clear up some of that. I mean, and I think we saw that even now, that even when we identified these traffic things, he's not ready to come back in two, two weeks with answers on that. He needs four weeks for that, so.
Yeah, but I also don't, I also don't want to defer this process to town officials. It's the ZBA that's on the hook. It's the ZBA that's on the hook from a public perspective, and I don't want a whole bunch of stuff going on behind the scenes. That's my concern. Um, but yeah, we'll need to think about and figure out a way to resolve this, because we're going to be in trouble. Right?
And I appreciate your concern, and I agree with you. This is important, and we have to make absolutely certain that all the issues are dealt with openly. There could be no lack of transparency, and lack of transparency is a perception that will vary with the reviewer, the person. So I agree, Sarah. It's important.
Okay.
There may be, there may be a way to kind of do with, if people are working together in between the meetings, and then one of the agenda items is update from, you could call it the subcommittee on whatever. And then you give an update of, okay, so we met on this day, and this is what was discussed sort of thing. Whereas that update, it gives the transparency, it lets everyone know what's happening. There's no secret meetings or whatever, allegedly secret meetings, right? Um, it's just, but there's still work getting done in between the meetings. It's an idea.
Okay.
I, I'm okay, Sarah, with having one, one meeting a month and just making it a marathon, like, you know, like Ezra suggested. I, I think that's just easier, you know, as painful as it might be sometimes, but that's my thought.
Okay, yeah. I mean, hopefully, the hopefully, we'll have more lead time before we try to cover things. But certainly, if environmental's not going to be ready till the end of February, we're not going to discuss that until March, right? So, and I don't know how long the engineering so, we're going to have to get an extension.
It sounds, it sounds like the, the engineering and environmental might be, might be happening, or you might be getting those, you know, in close proximity to each other. So you might have to have at least the initial report back, you know, two in one. I know it's a lot to, to carry, but if you, if you move to one meeting.
Yeah, we'll have to, okay.
Because they'll, they'll both be within, I'm guessing, three to four weeks from, from selection. And if you select them both at the next meeting, then they'll kind of be on track to be starting simultaneously. And I don't know, Ezra, I, I think, does everyone understand about what happens if you don't have enough to vote? It's just not that you can't vote, right? Federal House.
Again, theory, it would be a constructive grant. You know, I, I've never seen that actually happen, but, um, you know, and you would certainly talk to town council about ways to avoid that, so. But again, I think it's also very possible. As you get in the review, if you're showing good progress, you ask for an extension, and most applicants are, are happy to grant that as you move forward, so.
And is that normally done as you go along or towards the end?
Um, you want to get enough under your belt that they think you're making good progress. You know, you, you know what the first thing you do to be, say, give us more time. You know, it's, it's, it's like with a student in class. You know, if, if the moment you head up the syllabus, they've already asked for extension, you maybe want to see, well, why don't you get started a little? But if, you know, you, you're moving through, and it's very clear, there's more complicated issues have come up, um, you know, then that's reasonable.
Okay.
Madam Chair, can, can I just make a quick comment to respond to that?
Yes.
I, I, I don't agree at all with that advice. I, I think it's very risky for the board to assume that this applicant is going to give you extensions. Uh, it's not true that developers are happy to grant extensions, that, that I, I work on a lot of 40B projects around the state. That's not the case. Uh, you have a deadline to close this hearing, according to my math, of May 24. If you get these peer review reports in March, that's leaving you basically two months to turn all of this work around. That, that's, you, you have a lot of work in front of you, and I would really caution you against meeting just once a month. I, I think, unfortunately, you know, it's taken this long to get to where we are today. We opened this hearing in October. You know, we're already in, in January. I, I, I'm really afraid that if you only meet once a month, you're not going to get all the work done by May 24. I'm really concerned that you may not get the extensions that, that, that you're hoping to get.
Yeah, I think it's a question of whether we're getting, receiving the information we need. And if, if the applicant's not giving us the information we need, then obviously, we can't make a decision. We can't approve it. So there's a certain incentive.
It's a function of long lead times on everything. You know, for instance, you talked about the lead time today for our peer review, three to four to five weeks. You know, when I request them for work, I get them in 10 days, business days, you know, but even our guys now, they're a lot, a lot longer. And that's just a function of everything that's going on. People are busy, the labor, whatever. So it, you know, it, things are just longer nowadays. And out of our control. So perhaps there's a way we can get, like, that peer review, you know, that, that three to five week down to two to four weeks, you know? I don't know.
Okay. I will take a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Jim moves, who seconds?
Good.
James second. Roll call vote. Sean? Catherine?
Approved.
John?
Approved.
Brian?
Approved.
James?
Approved.
Jim, do I say you?
I approve.
And Sarah, please. Thank you all.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah.
Take care, Sarah.
Night, everyone.
Night.